Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, August 8, 2017. And roll call, we're all present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes from last time?
I move to approve the July 11, 2017, school board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda, we have a new agenda, the green one. Any changes to that?
I move to approve the August date, 2017, school board meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and celebrations? Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. First of all, let's look at the pink calendar, and I'm going to add a few dates to this, too. First of all, on Thursday, August 17, we'll have a policy and a curriculum committee meeting, the same members of the board, that will be at 4:30 in the business office. Then, just a reminder that school is coming soon, and a couple of important dates to put out, to remember, on this Thursday, August 10, we have an annual substitute teacher meeting. And that's a really nice meeting for the substitute teachers that have signed up to be subs for our school district. They come in for a few hours of training and updating. And that's at nine o'clock in the morning, and that's in the budroom, and of course, that's open to the public if anybody wants to come. It's always nice to talk to subs about, hearing their stories about why they like to sub in Fairmont. And we do do a survey at the end of each year. We do ask subs, you know, what they like about our school, and they're very good about giving us good feedback. And then on Friday, August 11, we'll have a student registration beginning, and that will all be held at the high school library, and that's from 7:30 in the morning until four. That's on Friday, August 11. And then on Monday, August 14, there'll be student registration also at the high school library. The hours are the same, 7:30 to four. So we encourage parents to bring their students in, that's a good time for the students to get their photo IDs taken. At the elementary, there's going to be another day for the students to get their photo IDs taken after the start of the school year, but they're also encouraged to come either on the 11th or the 14th to get their photo ID done. There's also going to be new teacher training on August 16 and August 17, and we do have 10 new faculty this year, and they'll be going through two days of intense training and orientation for Fairmont area schools. And then, just a reminder that on Monday, August 28, that is our opening session of all the staff, that will be held in the Performing Arts Center of the high school, and that begins at eight o'clock in the morning. And that night, at five o'clock, at Gomrude Park, there will be a staff picnic. So we have a busy few weeks coming forward, but just a reminder that students do start the day after Labor Day for the high school, and for the first two days after Labor Day, the elementary will have back-to-school conferences. And then, just want to update the board on a couple of other things. In the weekly report I sent out last week, just to publicly acknowledge that we did receive a $10,000 grant from Monsanto for the purchase of two virtual welders, and these virtual welders will be used on our eighth grade STEM classes, our science, technology, engineering, or math classes. Each of these virtual welders costs $5,000 apiece, but they don't use gas or don't use actual metal, so there's a lot of savings there, and it's safe for younger kids to do. And we're hoping to have all eighth graders practice on that, so if they have some interest in taking welding sometime when they're in the high school, they can do that. And that is from the America's Farmers Grow Rural Education Program, which is sponsored by Monsanto. Also, I gave you an update last week, too, that I did attend the District Administrative Leadership Institute Conference a couple of weeks ago in Chicago, and I do have one handout for you. One of the superintendents I sat next to was from Vicksburg, Mississippi, and this is a two-page handout, and I do have extra copies here for the news media. Trudy's going to come and get those. But Vicksburg, Mississippi, has done some really good work the last couple of years of creating career academies for their high school students. If you look at the bottom of this first page, one with, has all the circles on it, they have an ACME Academy, which is auto mechanics, engineering, machine precision, and welding. They have a CAB Academy, which is communication, arts, business, and that goes into agriculture, art, band, business, marketing, career pathways, experience, and choir. They must not have an orchestra. Then HHS, Health and Human Services, or Allied Health, biomedical science, culinary arts, early childhood education, public safety, and law. And they've just had terrific success in putting this together, and they work very closely with their local businesses. And, you know, we have a start of doing some of this in Fairmont, but this is really neat to sit next to somebody that is actually doing this the last two or three years, and I learned a lot from this superintendent. And then, we have a special treat tonight, too. Michelle Rosen has a special public announcement to make to the school board and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yeah, the exciting news is, we found out on Friday from Governor Dayton that we will be receiving this next school year voluntary pre-K money. So what does this mean? This means that our four-year-olds that are registered for preschool at Fairmont Elementary will get to attend free of charge. We are now, they're part of the funding unit now, so we are going to be getting state funding for them, and they get to come without parents having to pay that expense. We, let me just give you a little bit of background about it, and I'll tell you some things we had to change to make this all happen, too. Voluntary pre-K money was established by Governor Dayton and the 2016 Minnesota legislators for the purpose of preparing children for their entry into kindergarten the following year. The funding allows districts which are recognized with early learning programs to incorporate this money into their now E-12, yes, we got to keep working on that language, E-12 system. And we've been excited, we have been a part of the E-12 system, that is normal, I mean, I'm an E administrator, people know that is, and that's probably one of the reasons why Fairmont got this, because we have laid a lot of great groundwork for this to happen. So to be able to get this money, I just get goosebumps, but part of this system, it's, there are requirements for us. We have to do the MARS reporting, just like we do for all our K-12, early childhood will be in the MARS system. We have to follow the STARS report, which means we have to have qualified licensed teacher, and I have three very gifted birth-to-third-grade licensed teachers, so I do have the qualified staff. We do all the monitoring, the compliance, professional development, they are a part of our professional development days, they've always been a part of our Q-COM system, which is part of that, our teacher evaluation plan. We also had to be an exclusive, inclusive, sorry, inclusive program with our children with disabilities, and this is our third year of really being an inclusive preschool program. Our special ed kids are right in the classrooms with the other students, all services are provided into those classrooms, it's not a separate classroom like it used to be. We've worked really hard with our co-op to make that transition work, and it's worked very well, and we've been one of the leaders in the community to help the other districts realize that an inclusive program is where it should be, and so, very excited about that. And then, we also have to do some assessments of our kids coming in and exiting the program, which we already do at Fairmont Elementary. So those requirements weren't a big stretch for us, our teachers are part of our regular system, and that's what the state was looking for, and because of that, we got to receive this money. One of the other things that was part of it is appropriate transition to kindergarten, and I have to say, we just finished our kinder prep program, which I believe this was the sixth, maybe the seventh year of doing our kinder prep program, where our kids who will be entering kindergarten get that transition, get that time. We use our preschool teachers plus our kindergarten teachers together to make that transition. So a lot of these requirements that were, when we applied for this money, some districts have been struggling to do that, we haven't, because we've really set some great groundwork here in Fairmont. So I'm just excited that we got to receive this money this year. So what money did we receive? We received for 68 students. We have four sections of four-year-old preschoolers, and this is just for four-year-old preschoolers, they have to be four by September 1st to be in the program. That's what you, we follow that state guideline of September 1st, your birthdate, so it's for those kids that are four by September 4th. We have funding that we'll get for 68 of them, which, if you have four sections and we can have 20, that's 80 spots, the other spots go to our ECSE, our special ed kids. So that's the max we can have, we still have openings, so if you're hearing this for the first time, and you have a four-year-old and you're not in preschool, please come to the elementary school, get your child enrolled, we'd love to have them. And our registration date is August 15, come ahead of time, so we kind of know the plan for you, but if not August 15, we have registration and parent information. Some of our parents are hearing about this maybe now for the first time, we've called some, because one of the requirements is, we had to have so many hours. And so our morning preschool class was scheduled to be Monday through Thursday, just a four-day-a-week, or afternoons, we have done five days a week, that morning class is now a five-day-a-week as well, however, it's not an additional cost to parents, so when we called them all today to say, "Your child will be going five days a week instead of four," they were just so happy, because they found out it doesn't cost them anything this year. So that funding will be over $200,000 for our district this year. Sue and I are still trying to meet, sorry, this is a little crazy time, I don't know why we both haven't had extra time to meet, but to actually look at what the state is saying, where this money is, and how that will all work, so we're very excited about it. We, like I said, phoned out on Friday, and I'm just happy to share the news with you and everybody that's listening.
That's excellent, and again, if you have a four-year-old and you're just hearing this for the first time, what should they do if they want to participate?
You bet, come to the elementary's office. Sarah, Pfeffer, or Gene, both of our ASAs that are in the office right now will be there, we'll get you a packet to enroll, we do have to have immunizations, they do need to go through the screening, but we have dates and all that set for all of them, so we'll help them through that process. And then, August 15, 5:30 to 6:30 is just a parent information night. Some parents, if they don't hear this or haven't heard the great news in the community, that might be their first time of hearing it, but we will let all parents know that it isn't a charge for them this year for four-year-olds. Three-year-olds, we still, it's our regular program, but we still do receive pathway-two funding that we've received for the last couple of years, that do help any parents that have three-year-olds attend, if they fall in that income base or needed some support and assistance, we do have funding to cover their preschool as well.
Is this funding something that can be applied for annually, or is this just a one-time test, do you know, from the state?
I've been reading and learning as fast as I can, I believe next year, we will have this again, so our three-year-olds into our four-year-olds program will benefit from this. I just read one thing that said ongoing, I think the state is still learning, when I've asked them questions, they're all like, "Yep, we're still trying to learn and figure this out," but I'm hoping it's ongoing, and it's just part of our formula and into our general fund to help support our early learners.
Thank you.
And when you mentioned Mars and STARS, just for the community, we're not talking about outer space, Mars is the Minnesota report that we use to track students every day, that's the attendance that we use, and STARS is a report that is filled out annually to verify that we have certified and qualified faculty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown, sorry, I just get excited, had to write it down.
And ASAs are like secretaries, right?
Yes, thank you.
Just in case.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you and the staff that you've worked with for being able to, for having this, these programs in place, that then allowed us to be able to do this for our community and our students, so thank you very much.
You're bet, just excited, thanks.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
End of superintendent's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, donations, Dan?
In Appendix A, we have a donation. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas during 2016, the Fairmont Football Association donated equipment totaling $11,776.76, including new jerseys and pants for the varsity team, both home and away, a new video camera and other equipment. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair vote aye.
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Just the one donation?
That's the only one I see.
Okay, financial reports. Sue?
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the July 2017 Treasurers Report and Single Checks, wire transfers from July 7 through August 3, and the payment of the July 25 and August 8 bills. So I'll begin with the Treasurers Report, you should all have that. It's the 2017 Treasurers Report. We have all of our different funds and any accounts that we have within each fund, and then the end-of-the-month cash balance. And then on the flip side is the wires and transfers from July 7 through August 3. The very top one is the dollar amount that the district contributes to employees' VIBA and HSA accounts at the very beginning of the school year, so that would be if employees are, take the school district-sponsored health insurance, and then they have a district contribution towards that, so it's the dollar amount of their deductible that will go into their VIBA or HSA account right at the beginning of July. The next one is when we had our bond sale back on July 11, and the good faith check was wired into our account of $69,250. You go to the bottom of the list, you'll see now that money was wired to the US Bank, and that's because the money will sit, all of the bond proceeds will sit in escrow until we pay off the prior bonds. Okay, so we had it in our bank for a little while, and then we had to wire it to US Bank, where it will be. Back on the list, about the sixth one down, you see we had our bond payments of $712,000. We make bond payments twice a year, and that money is wired out. The next one is our net payroll for July, and the next few are associated with payroll. Then in the bottom of the sheet, you have our total July payroll dispersment of just about $1.3 million. Any questions on the Treasurers Report or the wire list? Then we have a register with single checks for July, and there's two of them. The first one was for a workshop that needed to be paid by a certain date, and so we needed to do a single check to accommodate that. And then the second one, to Youth Frontiers, that's a down payment for the eighth grade Courage Retreat that will be held in October, and down payment for the Senior Wisdom Retreat that will be held next May. Then we'll go to the registers. This time of year, we usually have two registers for each date, and that is because we're still paying bills for the prior school year and then the current school year. So if you look at your two registers dated July 25, the one that starts American Welding is for the 16-17 school year, and the one that starts Arnold Motors is for the 17-18 school year. And we did not have a board meeting on July 25, so then I did meet with Julie Lawy to review these, so then the payments could be mailed out. Just a couple to bring to your attention, starting with the register for the 16-17 school year that begins with American Welding. We have new copy machines in the district, so we needed to pay DeWor Electric a little bit for some wiring, so that's your fourth one down. And then, check number 6,042 made out to Southern Plains. This is for paying them for their services for the early childhood screening and vision and hearing screening. Any questions on that register? Moving to the register dated July 25, starting with Arnold Motors for the 17-18 school year. And it's a wire out, you can see the US Bank, and that's $712,000, that again is for those bond payments. So you kind of see that in two places, you know, I have it on the wire sheet, and then you also see it on the payment register. Check number 6,051 made out to Fast Bridge Learning, this is for the district testing program, and that is replacing the NWEA testing. Check number 6,000, or 60,064, rather, made out to Matrix, that is for some additional switches and access points at both sites, and then we will have an E-rate discount, so E-rate funds coming back in to lower that cost. Questions on that register? Okay, then we can move to the two dated today, August 8, beginning with the one that is made out to ACT, that's the one for the 16-17 school year. In the spring, we had 131 students that took the ACT exam, the cost is $58.50 per student, and we should have full reimbursement for all of our students, but then beginning the 17-18 school year, that reimbursement will only be for our students that qualify for free and reduced meals. And moving to the register that starts out with day plumbing, that's for the 17-18 school year. Check number 60,093 made out to I. Bailey, this is our new auditors, and this is our first payment for their auditing services for the 16-17 school year. And then the last payment is made out to US Bank, and that again is a wire out, and you've seen this before, this is the good faith bond proceeds going back to US Bank to sit in escrow. Any questions on any of the registers? Julie and I, as I mentioned, we looked at everything dated July 25, prior to those payments being mailed out, and then we reviewed everything that you've just seen tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no questions or anything, I would make a motion to approve the July 2017 Treasurers Report, the Single Checks, Wire Transfers for July 7, 2017, to August 3, 2017, and Payment of the July 25 and August 8, 2017 Bills.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Old business, non-new business, the elementary school handbook. And Jim and Michelle?
As we go, in front of you, in your board packet, you have a copy of the 2017-2018 Family Handbook, and just to remind, I'm a bit taller, thank you, and just to remind everybody who's watching, is that the Family Handbook is the place to go to look for information about Fairmont Elementary School. All of our policies are in here, you could learn about what do you do if you have an absent student, so everything is in here, and everything is in Skyward, or will be in Skyward for registration as well, and we have hard copies available if a parent would like to have hard copies. So in front of you, you have our Family Handbook, and if you remember, the board remembers about three years ago, we changed the format. We used to have not just our information on discipline, but we used to have our discipline here, we'd have our absence here, we'd have everything scattered, and so what we did with Dying Gear Hard is we sat down and put it together under one package, so it's a lot easier for parents to go through. I want everybody to remember, too, that our philosophy in elementary is that we have students that need to learn, and our discipline policy that's in here reiterates that time and time and time again. All of our children are just that, children, and they all make mistakes. As adults, we make a lot of mistakes, so our main purpose with our discipline policy is to teach children how to become better citizens. And we do it appropriately according to their age as kindergarten, certainly a lot different than our sixth graders, and we make sure that as we apply the discipline that we do, that it's a learning lesson for our kids, and that's a really important element for everybody to understand, it's a very important thing. As a result of that, we had a lot of people look at this, our dean of students looked at this, our social workers looked at this, our ASAs looked at this, Michelle and I looked at this. We had a lot of different people go through this, including parents, to look at and say, "Okay, what makes sense, what changes do we need to make, and how could we make it more accurate?" So, everything that's marked in green, and it's sometimes difficult to see, I even brought my glasses, because sometimes I can't see all the thing in there because of the color shading. The board is taking a look at this, hopefully, and I'm just going to go through it rather rapidly. You notice that in Consequences and Behavior Infractions, detention has been added. And you may ask, "Well, you know, we know detention isn't really that effective, we know the research in there." I asked Mr. Chambers about why detention kept adding in here, and the answer is really quite simple. If you go up the line and you see restitution, a lot of times, if our children make mistakes, and they write on the walls, or they do this, or they do that, we certainly don't want to take away from their educational time. What we'll do is, we will have restitution take place after school, which is basically a detention. So a lot of the time, we have allowed that time by putting detention in there as well. Very rarely do we have a detention where somebody sits in the library, however, we do have children come in and clean up the messes that they have made, and that's teaching the kids that maybe we shouldn't be doing this next time, because it's inexpensive on another employee in our district. So we continue to go through, I'm going to pull up my glasses, because it's not quite as bright in here as it is in my office. There are some other changes that occurred as well. On the attendance policy, we switched up the times to actually be times that we start, eight o'clock, and our kids are expected to be in the classroom at that time. On the bottom portion of it, is absences may be unexcused, even with parental approval. Now, sometimes, unfortunately, we have to say, "This is unexcused," because we have so many unexcused from a certain number of families, it's a rarity, but it does occur, and we want to make sure that the kids are our first priority, and we want to make sure that we are given that option to say, "Well, you know, for the 17th time, you've gone to visit grandma, because grandma's been ill, and you've missed three weeks' worth of academics, and so we're going to say that's unexcused, and we may have to follow truancy procedures in order to do that." We realized that that was not in there, and that was a real critical element that we would add to that, it allowed us to be able to do that, just in case that unfortunately situations do occur, like I just mentioned. As we go through this, and continue to go through this, if you take a look at page six, page six is Consequences for Infractions, once again, you have detention. And you also, we updated some of the programming and throughout some of the things, because some of the things were high school that we had in, Cardinal Connections, Courage Retreat, Cardinal Academy, and so on, and we added our Second Steps and Lyceums. Second Steps is an anti-bullying curriculum, Lyceums, et cetera, in the bullying policy. And then on page nine, detention is added again, and then we switched off to make it more accurate, drop-off and pickups, and you can take a look at that. A lot of these are just switches to bring it back to what it actually is. Friday folders, we have Friday folders in K through 4, fifth and sixth grade, fifth grade are opting out of them this year, as I'm now sitting here in front of you, because we are going to a one-on-one project with Crowe Books, and that makes it a lot easier to correspond back and forth with parents. A lot of the information is on there in Google Classroom, sent to Google, sent that way versus Friday folders. As children get older, they get more forgetful about bringing those folders home, so this way we can make sure that the information does get home the way it needs to get home. Harassment policy, hazing policy are in here, and what, should be some changes in that as well. On the bottom part, we, Health Services was added. Michelle talked to our nurse, we decided we needed to have something in here that more closely resembled what we actually do. So the health policy is written in here, and primarily what we did is, if you take a look at it, it says that "We would be glad to provide medication for your kids if it's in an extreme measure and the physician recognizes it as that." And if you read the other ones, Dr. Rodriguez, your expertise may fall into here more, but I think we've kind of covered, and our ends seem to think that we had the necessary language in here. And school suspension, under the supervision of an administrator, it used to be under the supervision of a principal, so now that allows us more flexibility. And then, as we continue through, there's a few things here and there on page 17. It's a minor word, but it's a major difference. Says, "Law enforcement officials may be notified regarding assault and repeated harassment situations." Our original policy was that they will be notified for that. There are situations when we have little teeny children that we don't need to have law enforcement there. What we need to have is maybe more, it's more of a therapeutic environment, bringing the parents in, bringing grandparents in, doing what we need to do based on our knowledge of the kids. And we know kids, because we're basically self-contained, and we know how they work, we know how they operate, and we bring parents in with that, so that's why that has been changed. And also- And office personnel, we upgraded that as well. And that is the extent of the change that's in here. Any questions?
What's a watch device?
Apple Watch.
And we're trying to, and it's, technology gets way ahead of us. So, I mean, we're, we're putting everything in there as it comes. We maybe should have, um, oh, what do they call it, the spinners?
Spinners.
We need to include spinners in here. I think spinners are dying out, haven't seen so many, and we're out with kids yet. We'll find out in about three, four weeks. There'll be something else, though, guarantee you. Kids are creative, marketers are even more creative.
Any questions? Okay, do we? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fairmont Elementary School parent handbook for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Danielle, MSBA membership?
Uh, yeah, MSBA continues to offer our district valuable services in the areas of board training and development. And they serve as an excellent resource when we have questions arise. Uh, their services were very helpful this year in analyzing the teacher's master agreement prior to negotiations. Uh, this year's MSBA membership fee of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars reflects an increase of a hundred and thirty-two dollars over last year's fees. Fees are based off of the district enrollment. Um, so I make a motion to approve renewing the district's MSBA Association membership for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then our next one is the MSBA Policy Services. Uh, we continue to utilize much of the information offered through MSBA's Policy Services and adopted their policy manual in full four years ago. This is very beneficial, um, to use their policies as a base resource, making changes needed to best fit our district's procedures and guidelines. Uh, this year's Policy Services fees of six seventy-five reflects a twenty-five dollar increase over last year's cost. So, I make a motion to renew the district's MSBA Policy Services membership for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Danielle. Policy Dell?
The Policy Committee met on July twentieth, and we reviewed the following ten policies. Uh, all of them require an annual review. Uh, only policy number four fourteen reflected any MSBA recommendational changes and required board approval. In appendix C, you'll see a copy of that. And on page four is the, in the highlighted language that has been changed. It's just the one sentence, including the sexual abuse, which includes all reports of known or suspected child sex trafficking involving a child who was identified as a victim of sex trafficking. So, having reviewed that and following the recommendations of, of the MSBA, I would like, I would like to make a motion, um, to approve the MSBA revisions of policy four fourteen, mandated reporting of a child neglect or physical or sexual abuse.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Danielle.
All right, so the St. John Beany Vended Meals contract. Uh, we've been providing lunches to SJV students for several years, and the contract requires annual board approval. Uh, the recommended contract for two thousand seventeen eighteen does not reflect any changes in services offered. The contract includes a cost to SJV of three thirty-five a meal, um, which appendix D is your contract and goes through all of that. Um, I make a motion to approve the SJV Vended Meals contract for two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Nicole?
We just learned of the following MDE regulation for adult meals, requiring a five cent increase in our adult lunch prices. And that states the two thousand seventeen eighteen minimum charge for meals served to non-programmed adults and other non-programmed meals, like student second meals, are breakfast, a dollar seventy-five or more, which is no increase for us, and lunch, three dollars and sixty-five cents or more, which is a five cent increase. Um, minimum meal charges are based on total reimbursements for two thousand seventeen eighteen school, free school, free school meal, including the value of USDA foods rounded up to the nearest five cents. And it's also because, it's because these meals are not subsidized by program funds, the second meal. So, with that, I move to approve the, um, five cent increase in the adult lunch price effective for the seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, uh. Go for this? Oh, yeah, so the St. Paul Lutheran, Dan, school food service agreement?
St. Paul Lutheran School would like to continue their food service agreement with Fairmont area schools for the upcoming twenty seventeen eighteen school year. St. Paul Lutheran School will be considered a site, the same as Fairmont Elementary and the Fairmont Junior Senior High School. Meals will be prepared at the high school and then transported to St. Paul Lutheran, where uh, we will provide a food service worker to serve the meals and clean up the kitchen. All meals will be submitted for reimbursement, along with meals from the other sites. A copy of this agreement is enclosed in appendix H. I make a motion to approve the agreement with St. Paul Lutheran School to provide meals to their students for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just wanna point out, as, uh, we're kind of in a unique situation as a community to show that we work so closely with our private schools. Now, and that, that is not the case in many cities across the state. And it's really nice that, uh, the Lutheran schools and the Catholic schools work closely with us for food service. And um, I, I just think it says a lot about Fairmont.
Thank you. Julie, contract settlement?
Yes, um, I'm looking for my, there it is. Um, contract settlement, um, staff welfare met, and um, there's a recommendation approving a two-year business manager contract effective for the seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen school years. Copy of the proposed contract changes is enclosed on appendix F. Um, and there is, um, some change in the production, providing health and hospitalization insurance to the benefit-provided teachers in the master's agreement until seven, for seven years until Medicare age. And that's very similar to what we have, um, in the teacher's contract. Thousand dollar annual increase in district contribution and a three percent salary increase. So, I'd make that a motion to approve the business manager contract for seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen school years.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Adele, retirements and resignations?
Terry Levin has tendered her letter of retirement effective July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Terry has been employed since nineteen ninety-two, having just celebrated her twenty-fifth anniversary with the district. Congratulations to her, and I would make a motion to accept, uh, the retirement of Terry Levin, Fairmont Elementary School principal.
Second.
ASA, effective July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
You're just, you're gonna get that one, aren't you?
Do we have a motion eager second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Should I read faster?
Yes, please.
Joni Winter has resigned her position as a Title One aide, effective August first, two thousand seventeen. Joni has been employed with the district since nineteen ninety-four. I would make a motion to approve the retirement of Joni Winter, Title One aide, effective August first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, Tara Thompson Thedens has tendered her resignation as a Title One aide, effective August first, two thousand seventeen. Tara began working for the district in two thousand fourteen. I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Tara Thompson Thedens, Title One aide, effective August first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that one, too.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we go to employment, Julie?
Yes, um, we got quite a few, um, employments here, too. Um, Michelle Rosen's recommending that Sarah Pfeifer be hired as an ASA three at Fairmont Elementary to replace Terry Levin. Um, Sarah's been serving as an ASA two, which is a secretary at the elementary school in that office since two thousand ten. So, she's very familiar with the office procedures and responsibilities. And so, I would make a motion to approve the employment of Sarah Pfeifer as a ten-point-five-month ASA three at Fairmont Elementary Schools, effective August first, first, two thousand seventeen, at a salary of step eight.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then with, um, Sarah moving up into that ASA three position, her ASA two vacancy was advertised. And um, we had over fifty candidates apply, and six were interviewed on August fourth. Michelle Rosen has recommended that Carrie Buncher be hired for the position. Carrie has nine years' experience working as a legal secretary with Erickson Law Firm, and has been employed for the last twelve years as administrative assistant with Martin County Victim Services. So, I would make a motion to approve the employment of Carrie Buncher as a ten-month ASA two at Fairmont Elementary School, effective August twenty-first, at a salary of step three.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
And then our third one, Jim Davison is recommending that Lisa Carnell be hired to teach sixth grade this year, replacing Haley Rocha, Rochdale. Um, Lisa holds a BA degree from Concordia University, Chicago, in secondary education with an English concentration. She is currently living in Glasgow, Scotland, finishing up a master's program in children's literature. Her teaching experience includes serving four years at a middle school classroom teacher at Salem Lutheran School in St. Louis, Missouri. And I'd make that a motion, excuse me, to approve the employment of Lisa Carnell as a sixth grade teacher, effective August seventeen, two thousand seventeen, a salary of MA step one.
Second.
It's a tie. I'll give it to Adele.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then number four, Jim Davison is recommending that Joy Rushi be hired as a titled-one instructional aide to replace Kathy Clouver. Joy will be working at Ashley Olson's classroom, two and a half hours a day for eighty-nine days. And so, I will make a motion to approve the employment of Joy Rushi as a Title One supervisory aide, effective September seventh, two thousand seventeen, a salary of step seven.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Our last one coming up here. And um, in your packet is a list of the fall coaches. Um, I'm not gonna go through all that, we do have a couple new coaches, I will just highlight those. Uh, for volleyball, we have for junior high, Callie Willie. Um, and then she's being hired, and then um, for boys C squad soccer, there's Matt Tennyson. And assistant girls soccer coach should be Kate Shanning. And then Kelly Queering will be C squad girls soccer coach. And all the others are as, um, as listed, but as they have served prior, so. So, I would make a motion to approve the, um, fall coach schedule for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so we move to board committee reports. Dan, operations?
Operations Committee met on July eighteenth. Uh, the majority of the meeting, uh, looked at, uh, our retrofit project for the LED lighting, replacing our fluorescent lights with LED. We received a comprehensive study done by retrofit company. The estimated cost for junior, senior high school interior and exterior, and also Fairmont Elementary School interior and exterior, is, uh, estimated to be eight hundred six thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. However, we would receive a rebate in the amount of just under one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The net total cost would be six hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. Our estimated annual cost in savings by replacing fluorescent bulbs with LED would be ninety-three thousand two hundred and eleven dollars a year, which would mean that within seven years, the entire cost of the project would be, um, redone in energy savings, would be recouped. Um, also, custodial time to replace the fluorescent bulbs will be greatly reduced, allowing the buildings and grounds staff to focus on other areas. So, um, next step we need to pursue is to issue a request for proposal for the purchase and installation of those LED lights. Uh, the bids will then be received and reviewed by Operations Committee, uh, at a future meeting prior to final recommendation. And the project will be paid for out of long-term facility maintenance revenue. Due to the size of this project, the, we will have to deficit spend in that, um, long-term facility maintenance budget for a few years, uh, which has, uh, been given the okay by our auditors. Um, Operations Committee did approve the recommendation to issue that request for proposal. So, uh, we'll look for that in the future. Um, we also reviewed a revised long-term facilities maintenance budget with, uh, our Buildings and Grounds Director, Tyler Garrison. Seating project for the PAC is postponed until the summer of two thousand nineteen. And this is because, uh, an architect must be brought in to bring all the seating, the aisles, and the handicapped accessibility up to compliance with the current ADA regulations. And we will also do lighting replacement in the PAC at that time as well. Tyler also gave us an update on the current roofing project. The roof above the high school cafeteria area was scheduled for just a restoration project. However, the contractors, uh, uncovered another problem, and they said a total replacement of the section of the roof would be, uh, advisable. Rather than go out for bids right now, where everybody's doing projects, it would be extremely expensive to bring in someone right now to do that. So, instead, we agreed to just patch, um, the problem sections of the cafeteria roof this summer, and then come back for a full replacement during the summer of two thousand eighteen, which would be much more, uh, budget-friendly. And finally, we reviewed the fundraising log that documents each of the fundraisers done by different groups at the high school and elementary.
Does he work?
It seems, it seems like there's a lot of projects, actually. There's not as many as I thought there was, but some of them are very successful, and some of them are a little bit smaller, but they all help.
Okay. Policy Committee?
Policy Committee met July twentieth in the district office. Um, myself, Dell Ellis, and Joe Brown were there. We, um, discussed the policies that have no need for, um, that they need to be reviewed annually, but there were no changes, so we didn't need to bring them forward. And we also discussed the policy four fourteen, which we, um, which we approved tonight. Uh, there were two policies that we're researching more. One is unpaid meal charges, and the other is uniform grant guidance regarding federal revenue sources. Those, I believe, are new MSBA policies, and so, we're looking into those to make sure that, uh, the policies, um, fit with what we as a district, uh, the values that we have. Also, we talked about with some of the mandatory, the policies for mandatory training for staff, that there might be some way that we need to ensure that they understand those policies and have been in attendance when those policies have been, um, talked about and discussed. And I, uh, don't know if that'll be in place this fall, but it is something that we are looking at. Some way to ensure that staff fully understands what, what those policies entail, and that we're following them to the federal and state guidelines. That's it.
Thank you. Staff welfare, Julie?
Yes, we met Monday, July twenty-fourth, um, and most of the stuff we've already approved. Um, we had a lot of, uh, discussion on the sixth grade teaching position, um, different options that we're going to do. Um, by very sheer luck, I would say, um, we had somebody moving into the district, and they, we said, get on it right away, and the teacher was interviewed and was found to be a qualified candidate and was hired, um, for that sixth grade position. So, it made us to a full staff. Um, the employment of Sarah Pfeifer, we talked about that, replacing Terry Levin, and then the, uh, ongoing of, um, adding that, replacing, um, Sarah in that ASA position. Um, we had a request to add additional. We had a request to add additional 7th and 8th grade volleyball coach. We kind of, we discussed it, and we want to just kind of see some more information as to how many numbers of students it is and that. So we've kind of put that on the back burner, and we'll look at that at our next meeting. And then we also discussed the roles of the 912, 7808 high school principals for 2017-18. We met with them, discussing what the roles would be and how things, you know, are planned for next year and that. So that was about it. And we did talk a little bit about negotiations, but that was in another meeting, so.
So Joe, when you did the interview with the 6th grade teacher, or Jim can tell us maybe, was she in Scotland when you interviewed her?
Yes, she was, and they did the interview via Skype. And she is, she's a spouse of a new associate minister who's coming to town. And he was over in Glasgow, working on his PhD. And so while he was there, she decided to go ahead and work on her master's degree and complete her master's degree. But just by, well, actually, we have to thank Cheryl Hamp. Cheryl Hamp is the individual that actually emailed us and told us about this possibility, and we followed through, and Jim Davison did exactly what he was asked to do and got right on it and interviewed over Skype. And you had a team of teachers with you, right? Right. She's, her specialty, of course, is language arts, but I think she also has a minor in social studies, and she'll be teaching three sections of language arts and two sections of social studies. I mean, a perfect fit. And this couple, they plan to stay here for quite a while, so it was just a great addition for us. And we wish Haley Rochdale well as she goes to Iowa. She's returning back to her home district, and that's why we had the opening.
Thank you. The last meeting was teacher negotiations, which was actually only two meetings held last week. Very successful, very pleasant discussion with the teacher representatives. Julie and Dell can comment, but it, you know, the fact that we were able to reach a tentative agreement so quickly speaks highly of the trust across the table between the school board representatives and the teacher union representatives. And so it was a very, you know, a very healthy process. And we now just wait for the approval of, you know, the teachers' union.
And just to update the board, too. Judy and Sue worked on the contract today and are actually putting the wordsmithing together of all the amendments and all the adds, changes, and deletions. I reviewed those today with Judy. And then later this afternoon, we looked at the compensation for Schedule C, which are the co-curricular activities. And we'll proofread that tomorrow, but I think by tomorrow, we'll be able to email the representatives of the Teachers Association to review to make sure that it's exactly what we agreed to, and I'm sure it will be. But you're right, it was one of the smoothest negotiations we've had, but it just goes to show how important it is for the system, whether your teachers, support staff, school board members, parents, and students to all work together for the common cause. And, you know, we have a great system here, and it's getting better every day.
Additionally, it was wonderful to see that everybody wants exactly the same thing. The best we can do is the least we should do was kind of what I took away from that. So it was, it was a, it was a good process. Hope they, hope they vote soon.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, Bert.